We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call Sandy.
Councilperson Brenney.
Here.
Bruni, Harry, Hanson.
Here.
McGinty.
Thank you. Do any of you have any conflicts of interest on any of the agenda today?
No.
No.
Okay. First of all, Gary, thank you for doing the meeting for me when I'm in my absence. I appreciate that.
It wasn't Gary.
Theresa ended up doing it.
Theresa ended up doing it? Okay.
Theresa's mayor for town.
What?
Theresa's mayor for town.
We switched that, remember?
Oh, you were and then, okay. All right. Thanks for setting me straight. All right. Item number three is consent agenda. A, approval of agenda. B, approval of the minutes of the October 28, 2014 council meeting. C, claims. D, consideration of approving Midwest thermal drillings, geothermal permit. Discussion questions.
All the city people have signed off on the geothermal permit?
Yes.
I would move to ask if consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Are there any further questions or comments?
Where is this Midwest thermal drilling located?
Or where are they going?
Or are they doing it for some more?
They're doing it for somebody on Elm Street.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Motion, Harry.
Thank you. Item number four, project Sac City facade project. Number one, consideration of approving CDBG drawdown number seven in the amount of $10,622.
I'll make the motion to approve the CDBG drawdown number seven in the amount of $10,622.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the CDBG drawdown number seven in the amount of $10,622. Are there any further questions or comments? If not, we'll call for a vote.
Councilperson Harry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Thank you. Number two is consideration of approving Region 12's bill in the amount of $1,083. Questions, comments?
I would move approval of Region 12's bill in the amount of $1,083.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Region 12's bill in the amount of $1,083. If there are no further questions or comments, we'll call for a vote.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Motion, Harry.
Item number three on the facade project is approving Frank's Design Group's bill in the amount of $14,951.44.
Just a question, how's the Frank's group been doing as far as work on?
We actually, I will be attending today follow-up meetings with all of the, or not all, but with the, some of the, most of the business owners that are, still have details to go over with their buildings.
Okay. Is Mr. Frank's gonna be there?
Yes. As of Monday, he was still going to be there.
Okay, good.
When I spoke to him, he said he would be there. And he also said that it wasn't necessary to meet with everyone because some of them had already finalized, but the ones that needed finalizing, he was going to meet with them.
Good. I'll make the motion to approve the Frank's Design Groups in the amount of $14,951.44.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Frank's Design Group's bill in the amount of $14,951.44.
So, would you say that as of the 31st of October, that the design work was 80% done?
Well, it's hard for us to tell, Bruce. We haven't received the final drawings yet, so.
I mean, is there any way that we can monitor this billing? I mean, I've personally talked to four people and said they haven't really seen their design work.
Well, I know one thing that has been discussed is once all of the final designs are complete, there'll be meetings put together to present the final designs to all of the groups. I think that's why you see it being 80% complete, because they haven't been rolled out to the business owners yet. According to Mr. Frank's, all but the ones we're meeting with are ready to be presented.
Any further comments or questions?
How will, how will the change in number of participants affect this billing?
That is, well, I mean, we have a contract for a certain amount of money. It's dimmed up as far as by the, by the amount of units. But I would also point out, it was predetermined even when there were 30 somewhat included in the project. So, the change of one individual business owner or business in the project would not change the amount of the overall bill. There's a contractual agreement for the certain amount of work.
Okay. If there are no further comments, I'll call for a vote.
Councilperson Harry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Motion, Harry.
Thank you. Item number four, facade project, is consideration of approving the city's portion in the amount of $2,990.30.
I would move approval of the city's portion, the amount of $2,990.30.
So, second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the city's portion in the amount of $2,990.30. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, a call for a vote.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Motion, Harry.
Thank you. Item number five on the facade project is consideration of approving the city's advancement of private funding in the amount of $2,422.14. Does everybody understand what that is?
I'll move approving the city's advancement of private funding in the amount of $2,422.14.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the city's advancement of private funding in the amount of 4,000, excuse me, $2,422.14. Are there any other additional comments or questions? Not a call for a vote.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Motion, Harry.
Thank you. Item number six on the facade project is consideration of approving the city's advancement of CDBG funding in the amount of $9,539.
Make motion to approve the advancement of CDBG funding in the amount of $9,539.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the city's advancement of the CDBG fund in the amount of $9,539.
We don't, we don't advance the Region 12 portion because they don't expect payment until?
Correct. They don't expect payment until the actual draws occur. So, we don't advance the amount that's comparable to that bill.
Any further questions? A call for a vote.
Councilperson Harry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Brenney?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Motion, Harry.
Thank you. Item number five on the agenda today is citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. Are there any today? If not, we'll move on to item number six, which is public input on solid waste matters.
Just wanna find out what you guys think of these landfills decision. Eliminate the landfill portion and become a transfer station.
I don't think anybody's real thrilled about it. It's going to raise the cause. I think that's pretty much the consensus of opinion, but we don't really have. Gary, do you wanna speak on it?
Not really.
You voted no.
I voted against it.
Is there, I mean, I know it has been voted, is this, is there any way to rescind the vote?
There's always a way to rescind it.
What do we need to do?
Well, I mean, I don't know what they're, how they're set up, but whether it could be anybody on the board, or if it has to be somebody who voted for it. But somebody could have a, depending on how their system's set up, somebody could re-raise the question, but.
Could a private citizen? Could it be approached by?
No, no. It would have to be one of the board members that would make that action. And of course, like I said, I don't know what roles they operate under, whether or not it'd have to been somebody who voted for it, or if it could be anyone that was any of the board members. Depends on how their system's.
The only thing is, you know, it's probably in, we're going to have to do it eventually anyway.
Okay.
But, to me, this moved too fast, jumped right into it. And it seemed like the committee members themselves, he seemed like the voting members that were on the committee were all in favor of it, but none of the rest of us really knew about it until we got to the meeting. And that's the part that upset me a little bit, upset Wall Lake.
So, who were the people who voted against it?
Ben Wallake, yeah, Litton and Neil Weddington?
Yeah.
Is that right?
And one more.
Me. It's just four of us.
It was five to four of us.
How many are on that board?
There were four people absent. There were two, two of your township clerks were absent, and Shaler was absent, Notable was absent.
Right. Boy, it would seem like with that many people absent, coming up with a committee recommendation, no forewarning.
Yeah.
You know, it just, it sounds like an overly expedited decision.
Would those four, do you think, Gary, have felt the same way as you did? Or do you think they would've felt the other way? Is it hard to say? I know you can't speak for them, but.
I really can't.
I know.
It just seemed like they were too, my personal opinion was that they were too much in favor of this whole change, do it now. Because we had three options, I believe, on the table. One was waiting, I believe, another year, if I remember right. And then one was continuing on with the rest of ourselves, because we did, and we already set the money aside to start doing this. Yes, it would cost us, it would cost us all three years. It's just.
You know, and I think it caught the public completely.
Oh, yeah.
Off guard. I mean, I found out in the newspaper.
Well, being a transfer station, you know, what it means is, we collect the garbage out there, and then we have to try and find somebody who wants it.
Have, have you found someone who will take the garbage?
So, what happens if you don't?
We have somebody right now taking it, yes, which is Carol. But the thing is, what's going to happen is, we have no long-term commitment from them or anybody else. But every county around us has already done it. So, we're about the only ones who have not. But we're the only ones who have a landfill, too, so that makes a lot of difference.
So, reading in the local paper, this is just a personal question, there was talk about not taking any houses that are torn down. Is that, has that been put into stone?
Where do you go with it?
To a landfill who will take it. See, we don't have actually out there anything set aside for this material to go to. So, when we have a lot of that come in, it really fills up the landfill fast. We'd probably be another year down the road, if it hadn't been for another community in our county, who had taken down, I think, five, six, I'm not sure, five, six, seven homes, and all went to the landfill. That filled it up quick, because you can walk up there, just take a look and see, see where it's at.
You can't burn it? You have to bury it?
No.
No what?
No what? Can't burn it.
Not without a special DNR, or DNR permit. Which you can get through the fire department, but you have to meet all kinds of criteria to even be qualified for that type of practice burn. That's usually what that is, is if the fire department wants to use the house as a practice and it meets certain criteria, they can request a permit from DNR to do it, and then you can.
So, they no longer burn anything at the landfill?
I don't think we've been burning really anything out there.
Okay. Well, I just know, the reason I ask that is when you drive by Lakeview, you know, they've got that area where they burn brush and things.
You see, now, we don't have.
Otobol does, too, west of town. West of Otobol.
That's a city thing, though. We can burn brush if we, what's the specifications for it, to have a place where we can, the city?
It has to be a certain distance from, from waterway or from habitable homes. There's all kinds of structured rules. Because we've looked at locations before, and one of the greatest difficulties for us is, is having the river run right through town eliminates a good part of our city limits as a potential location.
What, what do other towns, well, obviously a county, in the county, they bring it to us, but where would we go with that? It would raise the cost of demolition quite a bit.
We're, we're part of a 28E agreement.
Right.
So, we, there is no we, except all of us at one time.
But where would citizens in Sac City haul a house that was torn down if it was no longer accepted there?
I honestly can't tell you that. I don't know.
That makes you job in PNC.
It could be Cherokee, it could be Carroll. I'm not sure if Carroll's got a set aside for that area or not. But we'd have to find another spot.
It makes us really difficult. So, Carroll doesn't take torn down houses?
They could. I was not part of the group that went down and talked to them.
So, this transfer station, are they gonna take torn down houses anymore once they get that built? Not at all?
I doubt it. I don't think so.
It, when you think about what they're doing with a transfer station, I don't, I don't know how they'd be able to do it. Because, you know, they basically compact it somewhat, and then it goes into a trailer to be hauled away. You know, house material really probably, at least, it's usually not gonna come in in bags, it's gonna come in in loose material, and I would think that'd be a lot more difficult to, to deal with. That's just my speculation, though.
You know, it, it just seems, you know, if possible, to control your own destiny. Let's say if Carroll would shut down, or won't start accepting other cities. I mean, do they have an infinite number of, you know, areas where they can go with it? You know, that's always a question. But let's say if they would shut down, you know, then we're talking startup again, or how to handle it. You know, there's some unanswered questions with regard to the, you know, like the houses being torn down. You know, if nothing else, I would like to see the, you know, the, that committee out there, or the committee that meets, you know, to go more, you know, through a transparent process of how we're coming to this conclusion, what the alternatives are. We have the agreements worked out with Carroll, here's what we can do with the torn down houses and so on. I would, in some way, would like to, you know, be more inclusive with not that many, you know, cities being there when the decision was made.
Is there a reason they couldn't have put it to the taxpayers of each, I mean, put it out for a vote? They don't do stuff like that. I didn't know how they, if they had pretty different.
Not the way that it was originally set up.
I mean, and in their defense, I mean, they, it was decided in an open meeting, so it was.
So, we could've gone if we wanted to.
It was transparent, I mean, the, I think probably, I mean, I think we need to be careful with some of the transparency. I mean, it was, it was done in an open meeting, it wasn't done behind closed doors.
Right.
It was, it just happened to have been done in an open meeting when they, when it maybe didn't go the way that we wanted it to, and it's real easy with any situation, whether it's an election, or a meeting, or something, to say, well, there was, the process was flawed. I mean, that being said, I think certainly there's maybe some communication issues that didn't happen with the public, to know what's there. And what can we, as a city council, do to help communicate to the people of Sac City what this means going forward? And I think, I think that's, all we can control is.
I don't think we even know.
Yeah.
It's not clear at this point.
I don't think we even know what, how can we communicate what we don't know?
And I guess, and maybe, maybe it would be helpful, at least for me, and I think maybe for us as an elected body, if we could get a few more specifics about what the future plans are, so that we could help communicate that and alleviate the fears of, of what's happening. And I, I certainly would encourage you, Gary, as our representative, to ask, how, how can we explain this to our community and, and what things are there? I mean, and, and I'm sure that you'll do that anyway, but I mean.
It will be done in time, like Bruce.
Yeah.
But the thing is, is this is probably not going to happen for at least another year.
Right.
Not a year and a half, because we have to have a transfer station up and ready to go first, before we can even begin to do it and buy a truck.
Does that require a new DNR permitting?
Can't do that.
Dale, was there anything, like, written up in the paper that I missed about this? Did they have an article about it or anything?
What was on the front of the paper last week?
Page article, right-hand side.
But that was after the fact.
Okay. I skimmed over it.
It was after.
Before it, though, I meant before.
Yeah.
Before there was.
No, there was no information before.
Oh, well.
I know. I didn't know about it.
The meeting didn't start till seven.
Yep. We didn't know about it either.
I was asking the question about prior to.
No, prior to, prior to, I didn't.
There was nothing in the paper.
They post their agenda at the board house.
Okay.
You know, and I'll rescind, I said, you know, perhaps it was less than transparent or something to that effect. That was probably the improper term, and I think Bruce clarified that while saying proper process was probably followed, and I'll certainly acquiesce and recognize, you know, the fact that probably process was, was followed properly, and, but I'm just saying, you know, you know, maybe revisiting and looking at the issue again might be in.
So, I didn't mean to be critical. I mean, I think, I think we have to be careful about criticizing other, other legislative boards for doing.
Right. And, and that's why, no, I appreciate that.
Well, and why they only.
Not being dropped off to attention.
Why they only meet once a month, and I know there can be difficulty in getting all of them together. One policy we've always tried to follow when it comes to making large decisions, we've held off making large decisions when not all the council has been in attendance, purely because we felt it was a matter that justified having as many, if not all, of them in the room to make a final decision. That's why you're elected. But, but, you know, I also understand the difficulties in, in a board that has 14 people trying to get a commitment from all 14 to meet at a particular time and day, so.
Okay. If you're ready, we'll move on to seven miscellaneous. Is there anything?
Okay.
Well, I know, oh, excuse me, I didn't go any, I didn't go far enough. Far enough, far enough. I didn't go far enough. A, a representative from SETD to address the council, and that would be Chloe.
All right. Well, I'm here just today to talk about the Hometown Pride program, catch everyone else up on it. As an SETD board, we decided to ask every town to put in $1 per capita. So far, every town has agreed. I still have to talk to Lakeview and Shaler as of this time. And it's taken from the last census. The supervisors are putting in a portion, and so is SETD. Are there any questions about the program still, or anything that? So, if everything falls through, okay, the next step would be to have a steering committee, which we would like at least one representative from each town, as well as a couple of other individuals. And they'd get started on finding a coach, which keep out beautiful, help them through that process, but they would be the main group to find that coach that would be outside of the county. And then each community, we need to get a committee together as well.
Will you be selecting those people, or will you just let people volunteer?
That would be the town. Hopefully, each town can come up with a good representative, otherwise.
So, it's, who is our, who is selecting that representative? Would it be the council? Would it be, is it, is that who it comes down to?
Right. I mean, if you think of a person that you think would be good for that position, then most definitely the council can. I guess we haven't really thought of exactly who, you know.
I'm just thinking, you know, a lot of people might volunteer, but they.
I think it would be good to have somebody from, a, a council member, actually, as perhaps the liaison, so that we would know what was happening. Not necessarily for the, I mean, for the local committee, but I think for the county one, I think it would be easier, you know, I would, I think it would be nice, that way we would make sure that we have a communication stream back to us to know what's happening.
What are other towns doing? Are they looking at having a councilperson on the steering committee?
They have early.
How soon is this decision, is this decision going to be made?
Well, I would like to get as soon as possible. I'm talking to Lakeview and Shaler on Monday, as their councils are meeting, and then if everything goes good, then just get started from there. So, hopefully have a steering committee in place by December.
Does anyone on this council want to volunteer to be that person?
I would, I would be happy to.
So, are you asking for, at this time, are you asking for a one-year financial commitment or a five-year financial commitment?
Well, I mean, it'd have to be, when you sign the agreement, or I guess Bart would be signing the agreement, but you're signing into a five-year financial agreement, which at this point, I can't say, you know, it's gonna be $1 per capita throughout the five years. It could be less than that. And that's what, as a board, we're hoping for, because, like, Pocahontas County, they had funding coming from other places, you know, as soon as, like, year two or year three started coming out, so.
At the supervisors' meeting, when they were discussing it, they were talking about a three-year commitment, was it possible?
Right. They are just committing their portion for three years.
And then, their, at least their understanding, when I was there, was it was a three-year commitment that could be with.
Right.
With Hometown Pride, and it could extend the additional.
Right. You can, you don't have to go the full five years, no. But you can go up to five years.
So, we would, would it be fitting for us to commit, do the three-year commitment to match what the supervisors have done and revisit it?
Well, everyone will be signing the same contract, so.
So, and with whom is this contract?
It's with every community mayor, and then, or supervisors, and then SETD.
The contract is actually with SETD and the communities?
Mm-hmm. So, everyone is then on the same page. And somewhere in the contract, we can put, you know, up to five years, but it can be revisited every year, which I think is how it is stated in the contract.
We vote on it, don't we?
Yeah.
I would move to fund the Hometown Pride program at $1 per capita, effective of the 2010 census numbers, contingent upon all communities in the county agreeing to this process, and a member of the council as the representative to the county.
Steering committee?
To the steering, county steering committee.
For, commitment for how long, Bruce? Since that was brought up, I'd be, for our purposes, it's easier to clarify.
Us to three years?
Three years.
To match what the county's done? Would that come out of the?
With a consideration, if, you know, we'll reconsider at the end of those three years of this. Is that, is that acceptable? You said at first it has to be five, so is that acceptable?
Right. I mean, yes, we, I mean, that sounds acceptable to me at this time.
Okay.
You know, I'd, I'd like to bring up a point in, in terms of the motion, if it's contingent upon all communities, all it takes is just one not to go along with it.
Right.
Do we want it?
Isn't that with the understanding, though, that all groups?
Yes. Everyone has to.
If one of them doesn't, it doesn't happen anyway.
That's the whole understanding.
Everyone has to.
If one, like, if early has now, or whatever, then it's kibosh.
Yeah. That was, that was, the way it was presented at the meeting in Wall Lake.
Okay.
That it had, that it had to be all the communities in the county for it.
Then we don't really need to put that in our motion, it's already in the thing. That's, you know.
But it doesn't hurt to be, be redundant.
Okay, whatever works. Is there any additional comments, questions?
I have a second to a motion.
I'll second it.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the hometown project for a three-year period contingent upon all of the cities in the county taking part at, at an amount of $1 per capita in the 2010 census. Is there any additional questions?
And us having one representative on the steering committee.
And having one representative from the council on the steering committee. Is there any additional comments or questions? If not, I'll call for a vote.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Well, she tells us a lot.
Thank you, Chloe, very much.
I have a question. Why didn't anyone bring breakfast? Send a pregnant woman down here and...
I thought you might've brought it with you.
I haven't thought about it, but...
Okay. Thank you very much. Item number eight is the council forum.
Too early.
Too early, you're right. Actually, okay, could we have had this meeting like Monday evening?
I would have to revisit what the, what the state statute says, but I'm pretty sure, and of course, there's a way around that. But the way, I believe what it says is if you're, decide you're going to move a regularly scheduled council meeting, it has to be a subsequent day and it ha, and it has to be within 24 hours, start within 24. There's all kinds of weird rules, Bruce, Bill. But of course, the obvious way around that is, is you cancel the second regular meeting and call for a special council meeting on Monday. So, I mean, you know, we talked about that in the office. That is one way we could've done that a little different.
Yeah, and, and the reason I bring it up is, okay, let's say if we have it following a holiday at seven o'clock in the morning, you know, normally we would have the day of the meeting to, you know, visit with you and, you know, get our packets and whatever. And then the day of the meeting's at seven o'clock, so we can't do that, plus the holiday. It takes two days away from us to...
Yeah.
Get our information prepared.
It's not ideal.
Like, Mon- Monday, I couldn't make it, so I, I guess I didn't think far enough in advance to, to get everything lined up. It just makes it a lot more convenient, fits into our, if we can have it perhaps before. And, and at five o'clock is, is usually easier, I think. At least for me.
Okay. I have something to discuss.
I wouldn't have been able to be here last night.
There was, there's been several people ask me about what, what's going to happen with the chamber since Brandy has gotten a new job. And they wanted to know if there couldn't be a committee forum to discuss how they really want to move forward with. Do they still want to go part-time? Well, how does the city feel about it? What is their, how are they a player in it and how should we be doing it? Am I right, Dale? Have you been asked that question and...
No.
Okay. Have, have you decided, are you still going part-time? Are you, I've been asked a lot of questions.
No.
You don't know?
We haven't met since, I mean, as a, or, you know, since it was, since she announced it.
Okay.
So we haven't really been able to discuss it at all.
Okay, well, that will be my answer then to anyone that approaches me about it. I'm sorry to see her leave, very much.
Along those lines, there, this is a point of information, there will be an opening on the Historic Preservation Committee that Brandy has had. It probably needs to be a guy to meet our gender equality. Now, Brandy didn't actually live in town, so is it necessary that we have a city resident to do that?
I would have to look, you know, that's a good point. I'd probably have to look at what the ordinance says. You know, there's a potential that maybe once she moved out of town, she might not have, but I don't know if there's a residency requirement on the Historic Preservation Committee. I'd have to look at that, Bruce.
One of the things I would say is that because of the Main Street approach, there is a historic directive within the Main Street approach. And that's why the Main Street director is normally there.
Yeah. I guess, I mean, what I'm saying is, as a city board, it's a little bit, I mean, as a, as a voting member, but I, I think we have, we have to meet the gender equity. There's only, it's one guy and four women right now. And I mean, I know, I, I understand, I fully understand the, the logic of having the Main Street director on it, but, I mean, I'm also saying that, yeah. And maybe it needs to be revisited to have the Main Street director as the next official person on it or something like that, which could...
Other than the Historic Preservation point there, I'd like to just say thank you very much to Brandy because she's done an awesome job. She jumped into that part-time and it was never a part-time position. She worked more hours than part-time and she's done a very good job. I think we should officially say thank you. She's represented our city well.
I agree.
I'm sorry to see her leave.
Would she have stayed if you guys would've changed it to a full-time position?
We couldn't have. Matt, there's, and she's doubling her salary plus city benefits and all that.
And they're really excited to get her, cause somebody stopped me from there and...
Based on what the Chamber of Main Street can afford to pay, the financial gain we lose every time.
That's why I can't ever see it being a full-time position, unfortunately.
Okay. Is there anything else for the council forum? Could I ask, is, how are we doing on the water? Is that a valve we're replacing at the, in front of the rec center? What?
Uh, the, what occurred is, is a, the valve that feeds the, the community center, the rec center, broke. And it broke closed when a meter was being, they were in the process of replacing the meter inside of the building. The process of fixing that, in the process of trying to fix that valve, we initially, as a temporary solution, backfed water into the building through the library so that they could have some water in, in the building and, and have it open and, and available. Then we went in to, to replace, to fix and replace the valve. The, um, well, as probably everybody knows, that went a little more challenging than what was hoped for. It wasn't as bad as what we thought it could get, but it, I mean, you're talking about a lot of old valves and quite honestly, if we would've had to start turning off other valves on Main Street, we would've had a major mess on our hands. We were able to avoid that. The actual time period between starting on Monday and completing on Monday was less than two hours. So, all in all, maybe not everything went as great as we'd wanted it to, but it was quick. And so, from that standpoint...
So it's all done, it's functional right now?
Well, the, the meter has not been replaced inside the building yet and I know that they were still needing to do some exercising of the fix on the valve, but everything looks, for the most part, like it's okay now.
Okay.
So have we heard any more from the county about their ordinance that would enable us to enact their housing ordinance?
No, since they meet on Tuesdays, I didn't have an opportunity yesterday to, to speak with them. I thought about that last evening, is that I...
They actually met Monday morning.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware that they had moved their meeting, but, um, excuse me. So I didn't have an opportunity. I did speak with them a week ago, Rinald Drake, and he confirmed to me that the attorney was not done yet.
No, no, okay, not, not, not the, um...
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking you were talking about the urban development area.
Urban development, okay. No, I, you were, for us to enact a housing...
Oh, that, let me change stories now. The county treasurer got back to me. She said she's still looking. She hasn't found anything yet. Just to bring everybody up, to remind them a little bit, in order for us to, to take possession of properties during tax sales against abandoned properties, in order for us to enact that process or begin that process on our side, the first step in the process is, is the county has to have a ordinance in place that allows cities to take action on those properties. So the county treasurer is the body that would be doing the tax sales, so I've asked her to confirm that the county actually has the ordinance in place and she has, as, as of this time, has not found, has not found an ordinance to that, to that purpose.
Which probably means they...
Right. I figure I'll give her another week or so and then after that, then we'll have to talk about what our next step is, which right now looks like asking the county to consider developing a new ordinance.
Then have we made, have we made contact with planning and zoning yet about their revolving loan fund or is that going to happen at their regular meeting?
I suspect we're gonna be doing that at their regular meeting. There was not a special meeting called.
Is there anything else? Anybody have anything else?
Does that be coming up, uh, two weeks, week?
That would be next Tuesday.
What is today?
When do we take bids for the cemetery?
Yeah, Tuesday.
It's a third Tuesday.
When do we take bids for the cemetery?
For the cemetery?
When, like maintenance? Are we on a contract for three years?
We are in a two-year, we're in the middle of a two-year contract. I've, um...
Do we have to?
I've, I, I have some interaction going on with Dave and, cause there was, of course, some question about, uh, what we were going to do next year, which would be the second year of the contract. And that has not been resolved yet. Be happy to share that with you, wouldn't you?
Okay. All right. I just wanted, don't, I wanted to stay alive, cause there was a lot of disgruntlement.
Has there been any further talk about a manager for the pool regarding Kyle? Is that...
Yes. Actually, I talked with Kyle about it. Kyle's, of course, interested in the position. I simply told him we were looking at when we would be looking at filming the position, probably in the January time period.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn.